Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present and all with cake. Please rise in homage of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no minutes for approval. Go to our greetings, welcome everyone, nice crowd tonight. And of course, once again, welcome back Ray. It's been a long time waiting for you to come back. He's just, Ray has been working very hard behind the scenes. It's probably not more than two minutes if you sent out an email that Ray would respond. So he has been working very hard. And Jim Burnett, thank you so much for your leadership and holding everything together in his absence. And just a reminder, we have plenty of cake out there, so help yourself to some more. We had a great few days in Madison. Thursday was the Green Fair, one of the biggest crowds I've seen down there, demonstrating on how we can make our earth better. And one of the things that was at the Green Fair was TransOptions. And I have signed up and I challenge others to sign up for the challenge to ride your bike to work for the month of May. Obviously not too many people like me have a three mile round trip commute, so mine's a little bit easier, but I do encourage others to take advantage of an alternate way of getting to work and getting the cars off the road. Also related to that, if you check out the TransOptions website, which is transoptions.org, you'll see that May 7th is National Ride Your Bike to School Day. And Madison is one of the participating communities as you'll see on that site. One of the things that hit me very hard when I, last year rode my bike to a meeting at Rotary Club at Madison High School, and I remember that just a few years ago when I was a high schooler there, that used to have to find out where to put your bike on the rack. And I put my bike on an empty bike rack, which was kind of sad. So it'd be nice to see, change those habits and get back onto the, onto the wheels that don't create any carbon emissions. Now I'm going to come down below for a couple of items. A proclamation I wasn't expecting, something about Municipal Clerks Week. Come on down Liz. This is, as I mentioned, Municipal Clerks Week. And if you have the opportunity to visit the clerk's office, you're always going to smile, answer questions answered, answer its questions sometime, no. But Liz makes it all run so smoothly. So just to give you a little background about municipal clerks. Whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of municipal clerk provides professional link between the citizens and local governing bodies and the agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality in rendering equal service to all, and whereas municipal clerk serves as the information center on the functions of local government and community, and where municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration or the affairs of the office of municipal clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of municipal clerk, notably Elizabeth Osborne and Patty McEluso. So now therefore I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of the borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body do hereby recognize the week of May 4th through May 10th as the Municipal Clerks Week, and further appreciation to our municipal clerk, Elizabeth Osborne, and to all municipal clerks for their vital services they perform and exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. So thank you so much Liz. I just want to share one other thing. My assistant at the Y happens to know a teacher at Memorial School in Union Beach. And as she was talking to this teacher in the special ed, and he found out that she lives in Madison, he said, oh my god, Madison has been a godsend for our town and especially our school. What Madison has done has made incredible difference. And then she said, well, I happen to work with the mayor too, and he said, well, make sure the mayor gets this. Still here, still strong, Union Beach Memorial School. So just a recognition of everything. And just this past week, we had a group at Memorial School presenting the second year of the resident camp program, where we hope to send almost 70 campers this year as a goal. So last year we've made incredible difference by sending children to summer camp to get them out away from the despair in their town. And if you haven't visited the website to read our postcards, that's at rosenet.org, you'll be truly touched. And one of my favorites is, "This is the best vacation ever, I'm not sad anymore." And then there was another one of, "This is the first hot shower I've had since Superstorm Sandy." And the word got back that camp is fun and can make a difference, and so now we're trying to send more. And if you wish to support that, you can go to rosenet.org for more information. What I'd like to do now is we have representatives of the garden club, come on up, and David Maines, and anyone else from Department of Public Works?
The Garden Club of Madison has a long tradition of keeping Madison beautiful by creating and maintaining small parks, gardens, the hanging baskets downtown, and the mum sale to the merchants for Bottle Hill Day. Most of this hard work is done by our civics committee. In fact, several years ago, the borough gave a commendation to Barbara Carey and Eileen Richards, who are here tonight, who chaired the civics committee for many years. This year, our current co-chairs Patty Harris and Mary Beth Farrell decided it was time for the garden club to thank the Department of Public Works for their work in keeping Madison beautiful. And so that said, the Garden Club of Madison presents a certificate of appreciation to the Madison Department of Public Works in appreciation of your continuing support of the Garden Club of Madison, your commitment, active participation, and service impacts the vitality of downtown Madison and the entire community at large. Thank you for making a difference. I'm sorry, we don't have a single whereas. We don't have a single whereas in our conversation. Whereas, there's no whereas.
Well, thank you so much. That just reinforces one of the things that, many things that makes Madison great is the partnership, the work of Department of Public Works and the work of volunteers making our downtown so beautiful. Thank you. And if I have a couple of representatives of the DDC to come up here on May Day, and we're going to be presenting a few awards. Mara, come on up. All right. And this is our annual May Day Awards, and our, the heroes that make it all happen. So we have three awards and two, and the first one is a shared one. Yes, Lisa, come on up. And let me have Gary Ruckelshaus and Rich Romano please come on up. For the past three years, Gary and Rich mobilized the community by making the Madison Train Station a May Day community project. We are grateful to the Friends of Madison Train Station for its stalwart stewards of our historic station and its grounds. As May Day leaders, Gary and Rich ensure that the hills surrounding the station are mulch, landscaped, and by large, an intrepid May Day team. It is quite a team that is working there. And very important work because Rich is a tough sergeant out there. One more, one more, one more barrel, one more barrel. And now I got off script and now I'm in trouble. Gary, Rich and their team thoroughly transitioned the train station grounds from the winter to spring for residents, visitors, and commuters to enjoy. And it really does shine when we get done on May Day. So thank you so much for your effort on behalf of the borough. Take care. I would like to thank the May Day Committee. They have made, running the landscaping and the cleanup of the Madison Train Station so much easier because we couldn't do anywhere near as much as we do without your help, your volunteer, and your hundred cubic yards of mulch that we spread every year. It's extraordinary. New Jersey Transit thanks you, and we thank you very much.
The only thing I'm going to add is several of the people sitting around me have been carrying many, many buckets, and I hope we'll see you here again on the upcoming week to do it, including yourself.
I've been in training for those high stepping up the hill. And the age old question of where do retired mayors go, they go to mulch. Melissa Deportaire, please come up. Melissa has overseen and adopted the Madison Ambulance Corps in adjacent municipal lots for more than 10 years of May Day. Of course, this is not an individual effort. Melissa coordinates over 50 volunteers, starting with her daughter's Girl Scout Troop 1235. Expanded include Boy and Girl Scout Troops in Town. Her daughter now is sophomore at Madison High, has told us last year that she and her troop have been participated in May Day since first grade, a true heritage of volunteerism. Melissa and her daughter and all the parents and scouts typify Madison's core values that there is no better place, way to spend a day volunteering than with family and friends. Melissa, thank you so much for your effort. And Leszlozowski, please come forward. Many of us firmly believe that May Day is what it is today in large part due to the remarkable work of Leslie. As one of three co-chairs of the May Day Committee for four years and counting, Leslie coordinates the printing of almost 1,000 t-shirts, supervises the after-party, arranges for live music for the event, writes press releases, manages publicity efforts, and does it all through hallmark mixture of composure, passion, and intelligence. Leslie's competent leadership is evident throughout May Day and throughout Madison. Leslie, thank you for everything before, during, and after May Day. Thank you. Well, we got one more before you go away. So we talked about 1,000 t-shirts. 1,000 t-shirts that have become collector's items over the years because of the beautiful artwork on these t-shirts. And let me have Malaya Nutchen, please come up. And this, a copy of this has been hanging on the mayor's office door for a couple of weeks now. I love your shirt. Where did, what beautiful shirt? And who drew that beautiful picture on that shirt?
Me.
Yes, you did. You did a great job. And look, look at this, this is your, you get to hang this on your wall. And really, I'd love this because it's got great color, it shows people's heart at work, it shows our beautiful flowers of Madison, and it says what all, May Day is all about, "Have pride in our town." Thank you so much. See you on May Day, I'll be wearing your shirt. Thank you. Reports from committees, health, Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have two announcements from the Madison Health Department. First, it's offering a free oral screening on Wednesday, May 7th, from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM for adults without dental insurance coverage. To register for the program, just call 973-593-3079. And secondly, and I'll read this, the Madison Health Department will be holding Female Cancer Screening Clinic on Monday, May 12th, open to all women 18 and over who live in town, including nannies and other household employees and those without health insurance. To register for the program, please call 973-593-3079. Appointments are necessary, and they're necessary for both. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works Engineering, Mr. Cattinello.
Thank you, Mayor. The DPW continues to work hard filling potholes. Please be patient with us, it was a rough, it was quite a rough winter. In addition to that, they continue to work on the pump stations throughout town, and I'm happy to report that we're pretty much done with Treadwell. There's some generators will be installed there, so, and we believe we fixed the problem, which, you know, could have been quite a disaster if it happened, but timely work by the guys, by the members of DPW and engineering staff helped avert that crisis. Finally, the MAF 50/50 cash raffle will be drawn this Saturday at 12 noon on May Day at the fields. Tickets are still available. You can get them on the website, or you can contact pretty much anyone in the, in the sports programs if you are interested in buying a ticket. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Utilities, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. Report from the Electric Department and Michael Piano. They completed the reconstruction primary distribution of Buttonheim Drive. They completed secondary reconstruction on Canterbury Road, installed new outlets at Waverly Place Planter, repaired manhole and replaced manhole cover on Waverly Place. They removed poles at the Green Village Road School. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. And Public Safety, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. The Fire Department during the month of April responded to 16 general alarms, 12 steel alarms, 27 investigations, and 35 medical calls, for a total of 90 incidents. They also conducted two departmental drills. And complete streets Subcommittee consisting of council members Vitale, Wolkowitz, and myself have been meeting with police officers Longo and Ripka to discuss some problem areas in town for pedestrians and sight, and we're working towards making our streets safer. So that we will continue to talk about in the months to come. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance, Borough Clerk, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a couple of announcements from the clerk's office befitting the honor bestowed on the clerk's office this evening. We had districts 2, 4, and 10, their polling station had been the North Star Athletic Club. That will be changing in this next election. For those of you in voting District 2, Rexford Tucker Apartments will be the proper location. If you're in District 4, New Life Fellowship, and if you're in District 10, the Madison YMCA. There will be written notices going out in May regarding those changes. Also, I'd like to let you know that late night voter registration for the June primary election is scheduled for May 13th. It's the last day to register to be eligible to vote for the June primary. So, you know, the clerk's office will be open until 8:00 PM, but don't come on the 14th. Please register to vote. Any residents interested in becoming a poll worker for elections, please contact the Borough Clerk for additional information. It's an honorable job, and it's an interesting day. So by all means, if you have the time, speak to the Borough Clerk about it. On the financial side, I just wanted to mention that the audit for 2013 is currently underway. We are in the process right now of setting up a meeting with the auditors and the newly formed Audit Committee. I'll have more to say about that in the future. We have had successful labor negotiations now with three unions, and there's more to come, but it's nice to be able to say that this time of year we have agreements on the table with the PBA, the Teamsters, and the IBW. I'd also like to mention that May 15th is the day the Morris County Board of Taxation will consider appeals for Madison. There are 36 pending appeals, which although it sounds like a large number, is actually not bad at all. So, and also by the way, for those of you who have appeals, you may want to talk to one of us on the council or the administrators, because going into the appeal process cold is not a pleasant event, and you should know what's expected for a successful appeal and to get a fair hearing. I'd also like to mention that tonight, we have $1.246 million in new capital projects on the agenda. That's in addition to the $1.6 million we previously approved for multiple road products, projects. So we're moving right along, and hopefully you'll be able to see the difference in not too distant future. And I'd also like to add that the, both the Madison Athletic Foundation and the Open Space Advisory Committee have been invited to present their quarterly reports at the next meeting. It's a little later than usual, but there are good reasons for it. One is we have the budget, and secondly, as Councilman Cattinello just mentioned, a major fundraising event, the annual raffle, or bi-annual, bi-annual raffle, will be taking place this weekend, and so we'd hope to hear about the results at that next meeting. And I think also I should add, for those of you who wish to buy a raffle ticket, the Madison Pharmacy and Rose City Jewelers also have them.
Yes, they do.
So if you're downtown doing a little shopping, by all means, walk in, you might find it a break even day as a result of this. Thank you.
More break even, I hope.
Or a great day for downtown Madison.
Yeah, exactly.
Community Affairs, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you. Senior Citizens Advisory Center Committee, the annual spring luncheon was catered by CJ Deli, was held on April 23rd. We had 40 people in attendance, including our volunteer tax counselors. It's noted that Madison is the only community in the county to honor their volunteers with a luncheon, and that may account for the unusually high retention rate we typically see. The stretch and flex class that began last winter now has 16 people registered for the spring season. This now offsets the YMCA's quarterly program with enough surplus to purchase additional equipment by the participants. Volunteers have again been recruited for the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee to help with tasks during May Day, primarily delivering water to sites around town, reporting progress on garden efforts. And finally, retired guidance counselor and Madison resident Hank Knoblock has volunteered to handle small projects around the civic center, including repairing card tables, cutting back ornamental grasses, and removing storm debris. The seniors and I would like to thank him for his work. The Downtown Development Commission, this coming Saturday again is May Day, and volunteers are still needed. Please contact Lisa Ellis or Mara Johnson if you're interested and able to help with this great effort. Sidewalks now, sounds start this Thursday evening at 6:30. For the next 20-plus weeks, there will be musical performances in downtown on Thursday evenings and some weekends. All are invited to attend. The artwork for the downtown sidewalk gallery will be going up this week. Special thanks to the Department of Public Works for helping to install additional new art poles. And I have a little thing, this is what the artwork, some of the artwork is going to look like this year. Heavy focus on Madison themes, and at the end of the season, it will be auctioned off at the gala that'll be held in October. So that'll go for a worthy cause, the DDC. And finally, for the DDC, they are preparing for the farmer's market, which will start at the beginning of June and continue through mid-October. The Commission also hosted a very successful volunteer recruitment event this past Thursday. I think we had over two or three dozen people in attendance from the community, it was a great effort. And finally, the Recreation Advisory Committee. The Committee held a final discussion on background checks and coach training. Hopefully the council will have something to vote on in May or June. There was a detailed discussion on the condition of the fields at Bell Yeller. It's agreed we take a look at taking the field out of service next spring to allow for significant work to be done and allow time for the grass to grow back properly. Attending the meeting, I observed a couple of things. One, I think we need a long-term process or plan for field remediation and resting as prescribed by the detailed report with the BOE some numbers years ago, and also long-term field study use with the BOE. We're looking at the loss of GVR in the near future, the potential field upgrades at Madison High School, using some of the proceeds from the sale of the GVR, and also possibly looking at revitalizing the field behind Central Ave for rec activities. And I think I'd like to work on both of those this year with the rec committee, they're both important things. And finally, Bob Vogel will be working with the Electric Department to determine how we can relight the basketball courts at Dodge Field. There are plans to have a summer basketball league, but it's dependent on having properly lit courts. And finally, some of us were in attendance this past Sunday when the new pizza restaurant, which is going to be opening tomorrow evening, Urban Fire, on the western end of Main Street, just behind Chipotle and that shopping center. They serve delicious pizza from a wood-fired oven, and I would encourage all to stop in and try their food out, it was great. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Communications and petitions.
None received, Mayor.
So this is the first of two invitations for discussion. Again, they're limited to items on our agenda discussions, I won't read them all this time because there is quite a few capital projects, but one that's not capital is the Borough Code to, Amendment to Chapter 185 Borough Code to prohibit parking on the south side of Burnett Street. So you can comment on that, comment on any of the appropriations for capital, or any other resolutions that are listed for, on the consent agenda rather. Anyone wishing to comment on those things, please step forward to the microphone, state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Welcome.
Evening. Sharad Gupta, 25 Buckingham Drive, live on the corner of Burnett and Buckingham. For the no parking signs on Burnett Street, I've been working with Officer Longo to talk to the residents that live in and around the area, and there's overwhelming support for those signs during school activities. When there's parking on both sides of the street, it is really a dangerous situation. You can't make turns onto Burnett. The Florham Park Emergency Services uses that road heavily, Fire Department and EMS. There's been numerous times where that fire truck has had to stop because you can't get through when there's cars on both sides of the streets. It'd just be a safer environment, and the way Officer Longo's presented the sign, it still gives flexibility for parking during non-school events. So by limiting it that way, we think it'll be more effective than the temporary signs that are just that, they're temporary, they don't, they're not that effective. You know, if we do that coupled with enforcement, I think we'll have a safer neighborhood that way during school events. Thank you. Next.
Hi, Rich Taylor, 9 Burnett Road. I've been a Madison resident 27 years, been on 9 Burnett Road for that whole time. I'm on the north side of Burnett, it's top of the hill, so there's only four driveways on the north side. So when there's cars during the school, school events and sporting events, it's almost impossible to pull in or out of your driveway without, you know, a fender bender. It's extremely dangerous. It's just too narrow at the top of the street, and it affects everybody all the way down. The temporary signs just aren't cutting it. That's it.
Thank you very much. And don't forget to write your name and address on the clipboard if you didn't do so.
Greg Salerno, 26 Buckingham Drive. I'm on the other side of Sharad who just spoke. Same situation, these temporary signs, all they do is end up falling over, and once they fall over, people start parking there, and then it ends up, everybody starts parking there because they see one car there. there because they see one car there, and then there's a whole line. And once you have cars on both sides, like you said, you can't pull onto the road. It's a dangerous situation even for people crossing the road, which is really dangerous during sporting events. So, we really need to have permanent signs up in this situation.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard on items on our agenda? Sam?
Sam Cerce, Yellow Park Avenue, Madison. If I may, you know, I talked to a lot of people. This sound system is, when they watch it on Channel Twenty-One, the sound system really isn't, and the council people talk, and people, you can't really understand any word they're saying. Either, maybe we could fix the sound system, or make sure we tell the people when they talk, talk right into the microphone. I mean, a lot of people just, they like to watch it, but they just can't hear anybody talking. Just a suggestion.
Thank you.
On resolution, well, first of all, looking at this agenda, there's no problem, Madison with money, boy, we're spending a ton of money. I mean, there's, I thought it was a bad economy, but this town, don't have to worry about money here. We spend a ton of money here, but I guess we need to. I'd like to just, a couple on the resolutions, Resolution 128, can you explain that one for me?
128?
128. What union is that?
IBEW Settlement.
We, we have entered into a tentative deal with the IBW. My understanding is they've ratified the terms of a...
Who's, could it just, what's...
The Electric Utility. I'm sorry, the IBW is the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. It's a union that represents the utility workers at the electric utility. We've entered into a memorandum of agreement. It's been ratified by the workers. It's before the governing body tonight to ratify. The terms are favorable to both the employees, but also to the borough. What we've done is we've added steps to the guide. It's basically going from an apprentice to a journeyman, or journeywoman. We've added steps to decrease the, the, the rate of growth over a person's career. We've made changes to workers' compensation, a number of other changes that'll make it a sustainable contract for the next several years. It's very favorable, I think, to the borough.
Thank you. Resolution 131, I'd like to know where we're at with that on Green Village Road School.
That is extending the council that we have working on the Green Village Road School redevelopment project. We are getting very close to the finish line. We're not there yet, so we need to just extend their contract. The cost of this contract gets, is covered through the sale of the property.
And then was it, it's not coming out of our...
Right.
When they sell it. How's it look? We got some bids on that, or?
We're, we're, hopefully, we'll have news soon, but we're getting, we're getting there.
And then, when you do so, they're going to go next door here on the east, east, east wing?
Well, that'll be for another day.
That's a good idea, you know.
Yep, great idea. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Being none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to our agenda discussions. And the first one is amending Chapter 185 of the Borough Code to prohibit parking on the south side of Burnett Road during high school and sports events.
Mayor, do you want me to start?
Okay, yeah, sorry.
And then they can answer the questions?
That, that'll be, that'll, that'll be.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
I never saw Joe so bashful, that's why we were trying to get him up there.
Well, they, this is, they're, we're all new to this, so we're working the system here. So, Officer Longo has been working the Burnett Road situation, as you heard from the neighbors. They're parking on both sides, which has restricted the road for emergency vehicles. So, we want to post permanent no parking on the residential side during school events and during school hours. But that doesn't mean it's going to be around the clock. The neighbors will be able to park in front of their homes and other times. And the, when he did the process, he vetted the neighbors, and the neighbors had a petition, and everybody, a majority of the people support this project. As you heard, there were no dissenters, and if anybody has any questions, Officer Longo's here.
Pat? Yeah, I mean, the school hours is kind of obvious. How does somebody know when a sporting event that's outside school hours qualifies for the no parking? Are you going to put up additional signs, or?
Yeah, there's going to be additional signs, and one of the things we're looking to do, we're not looking to overpopulate the area with signs. We strategically place them, so it's enough signage that people realize there is no parking on the side of the street. And again, that's only during school events and sports sessions. So, if in the middle of a winter night, one of the residents, or Christmas Eve, let's say, one of the residents wants parking in front of their street, they'll be able to have their guest park in front of their house. So, it'll only be when there's a school sport in session, or project graduation, or something along those lines.
Okay, but a football game?
Football game, graduation, lacrosse tournament, anything in that, in those terms, then the police department will have the authority to issue a borough ordinance violation in the parking code under that chapter for the violation.
And we are sporting, our recreation department also uses the fields on some weekends. Does, do those events qualify as well?
Yes, that, any, any sporting event, and we were, made sure the signage said, including school events and sports, meaning any sports.
Okay.
You know, it would, the law would be, or the, the ordinance would be in effect.
Yeah, thank you.
Our concern was for the residents to still be able to have parking in front of their house on the off-peak hours.
Rob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, my oldest son's a sophomore at the high school, and from, when I get the chance, I like to, you know, I'll go in the morning with him. And I noticed that students even park on Ridgedale. So, parking seems to be kind of a premium. Where do we, have we made any provisions for where students will park during school hours now that Burnett Road is, is no longer viable option?
The, the students still park on the high school side of the field. They are pretty good at policing themselves to park on that side of the field.
And never sp...
One of the things they do is they start parking on the side streets, which we correct as soon as we see it. We call the school resource officer who makes notification, notification to the school. The one thing we have noticed, which is part two of this, I wouldn't say problem, but there is a lot of parking on Burnett Road as a result of the high school. For instance, today, there were forty-six cars on the high school football field. So, that is part two of the project to, you know, I've been, I don't, Lisa Ellis, I, we've been discussing it, and it's on our to-do list for part two. There are a lot of cars parked on Burnett Road, and we are looking at some other options because, you know, the residents during the daytime have trouble on the other side of the road, have trouble backing up. So, we are looking at, you know, that, that's in the works. We're not doing anything now, but, you know, the, this part of the ordinance was just to deal with the sports events and the school sessions on the, the high school.
What the borough has offered to the Board of Education is the MRC parking lot, which would be empty during school hours, and so that would be a, a, a way to get cars off the streets. Of course, we could always try to fill up those bike racks again, too, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not going to happen.
Is there, is there a viable path? I'm sorry, back there, because that, that was something we had talked about a couple of years ago, and people felt it was kind of difficult to get between the two.
It's, there's a path between the two fields and on, and on to the, it's obviously that one of the issues...
Snow and rain.
In, yeah, it's snow and rain would be a problem, and the goal that people want to park as close as possible, but at least it's an alternative that if, if there is an issue. Ben?
Yeah, I was in response to the residents who spoke a few minutes ago. I had a question regarding off, these off-peak hours, if I call, no, the question's actually about following up on what they said. If these are indeed peak hours, and I'm looking at them that way, and so therefore Burnett Road becomes impassable, what assurance do you have off-peak that the same thing doesn't
Typically, on off-peak hours, there's not parking on the football side of the roadway. Typically, people by force of habit go to high school events by making a left or right off Burnett from Ridgedale, and they park along the high school side first. Their alternative would be to do a U-turn, either by Chateau Theory or by North Street, and come back up and find their way to, you know, Burton Burnett Road.
So, you're confident doing this?
Yes, we've looked at that. You know, I live in the area, too, so I, you know, use the high school track, so I'm up there quite a bit. And when there's just one or two cars, they're parked on the football field side, so it's fine. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
One last question. So, if you don't let people park there, where are they going to go?
I would hope they would be more diligent looking for spaces in the high school parking lots.
You're not afraid they're going to move into just the rest of the neighborhood, because that's sort of the path of least resistance?
Unfortunately, I can't say, you know, that's not going to happen. If it does, we will have to address it when it does.
Okay.
I think the immediate concern is the lack of ability for emergency vehicles to proceed down Burnett Road. The one thing we have done recently is we've posted temporary no parking signs on that side of Burnett Road. They are very vulnerable to water, rain, snow, wind. So, sometimes, you know, they aren't a perfect solution. On the larger events, yes, it spills off into the neighborhood. We do enforce, you know, twenty-five, the New Jersey statute for parking within the intersection or stop line. You know, we, we do our best to, you know, control parking, but, you know, there's always a need for wherever you go, more parking, and, you know, we're trying to do the best we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, this is Ordinance Ten, which is listed for introduction tonight. Well done. Thank you, residents, for coming out. And now we'll move on to our next items, and what we'll do is, I'm going to put these discussion items in group by, basically by department, so we'll take care of two and three, which are ordinances nine and eight. And so, these relate to the fire department. So, this is appropriation of $11,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for four sets of firefighter turnout gear, and appropriation of $57,000 general capital for purchase of a new four-by-four pickup truck for the fire department. Questions for the chief on these items?
Good evening.
Pat?
I had sent a question this afternoon. I was just wondering, the, the four-by-four pickup truck, I was comparing it to the one for the electric department, also looking at the cost of police cars. It seemed to be significantly higher. Why does it cost so much more to outfit a, a, a fire truck for the police, fire department? And are we reusing any of the, I'm assuming this is retiring a truck, are we reusing any of the material from the current truck to save costs?
We are retiring a 2,000 Ford pickup truck right now. No, we're not going to be reusing anything out of it. It's pretty well beat up. It's shot.
It's ruined, bad shape.
So, everything starts from new, everything from radios to lettering to, to lighting. So, it's starting, it's, it's replacing, is what it's doing. How it compares to the others, I don't know. I can just tell you that, that this has got options on it that maybe theirs doesn't. I, I, you know, I can speak to what I'm getting, I can't speak to what they are getting.
Well, I wasn't necessarily asking you, per se, but since you're the only person here, I was just wondering why there was such a vast difference in, in cost between the two? Because I, I figured the, a police car costs quite a bit to outfit as well, and I think they were priced at about $30,000 in our capital budget, and I'm assuming the truck for the electric department's actually bigger than yours, it just seemed kind of like a...
Police, police department vehicle, I know, doesn't have a plow on it. This does.
Oh, it does, okay.
Police department vehicle, I know, doesn't have a lift gate. I know this does. Police department vehicle doesn't have to tow a 8,000-pound trailer. This does.
Okay.
It's going to have compartments, it'll have lighting, it'll, it's, it's an all-purpose utility vehicle, so it's got a lot more things that a police car doesn't, that I'm aware of, so.
And it's through state contract?
Yeah, it's all under state contracts, too, yeah.
Any other questions for the chief? So, these are ordinances nine and eight that are listed for introduction tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next group are four, five, six, and seven, ordinances twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen relating to electric capital. Michael Piano, thank you.
Evening.
Do we have questions on these items? Pat?
The only question I had here was on, um, ordinance twelve for the two pad mount transformers. I went through the whole capital budget, and I could find everything here in the 2015, 14 capital budget we approved, but I couldn't find that one. Was that in there, or is that a separate item that we're, that's...
It wasn't in the January twelfth presentation, then the engineer met with the electric utility superintendent, and in the presentation that was given on January twenty-seventh, it was added as part of it.
Okay.
It was approved by the government. The engineer recommended.
Right, and, and Bob had notified me that this project was going to move forward this year, so that I figured we'd get these transformers ordered. There's two different volages at that, at that, there's a different voltage for the water station, there's a different voltage for the sewer pump station, so they have to have separate transformers.
One other question, how do we decide that it gets charged to electric rather than water, since it seems to be supporting the water department infrastructure, or the sewer department? The transformer itself? I mean, I know it's an electrical item, but...
It's, it's basically our, our gear, our equipment, once it's, once it's installed.
And you'll be overseeing, overseeing the installation of it?
We, we will install, we will install the cable. We're in the process right now of looking, of getting prices on the installation of the conduit and, um, construction of the pad that the transformer sits on.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
You, can I just, you expect that that has to be done, am I right, Bob? You want that project on Nord Street done, right?
That, that, that's in the north street.
Okay, yeah. Twenty-six.
So, to pick that up on, since Bob doesn't have a microphone in the back row, the question was, is this part of the redesign of the pump station at Nord Street? And the answer was, yes, it is. And also, to clarify, because I apologize, I didn't read these out, the $65,000 for electric, from Electric Capital for two pad mount transformers at the Nord Street Sewer and Water Pump Stations, appropriation of $30,000 for a new three-quarter-ton pickup truck, appropriation of $25,000 for new battery banks, Kings Road and James Park substations, and appropriation of $30,000 for the purchase of new fiber optic pilot relay system, all coming from Electric Utility, Electric Capital. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mike. So, these, again, these are ordinances twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, which are listed for introduction tonight.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next group, which will be eight, nine, and ten. Ordinance sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, appropriation of $10,000 from Water Capital to fund well upgrades, appropriation of $80,000 to purchase new generator, well E, again, Water Capital, and appropriation of $130,000 for improvement to purchase BACCO to DPW, which is coming out of Water Capital. David's here to answer any questions on, on those three items.
Got more than that.
It's all discussed when we had our capital hearing back, well, three months ago, when we first, the first night we started, uh, on all these items here.
Any questions or comments? Okay, and again, those are ordinances sixteen, seventeen, eighteen that are listed for introduction. And David will stay there for the next round, which are eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. Appropriation of $160,000 in general, general capital for purchase of lift replacement for the mechanics department, appropriation of $30,000 from general capital for, for purchase of pole barn for storage at DPW Garage, appropriation of $160,000 for purchase of a new loader, and appropriation, appropriation of $8,000 to replace the floor at the Civic Center. Do we have questions or comments on those? Rob?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for your information, the DPW yard is getting kind of crowded. David has some very good ideas on, on how we can alleviate some of the, the crowding as, and I believe he's talked to some of the men about it as well, so I'll be putting in a, an agenda rack, and I'd ask David's cooperation so that we can give him some approval and guidelines on, on how to, uh, help set the yard up for maximum efficiency, as well as address some of the drainage problems we have, and some of the pitting that we have on, on some of the, uh, yeah, on, on some of the surfaces out there. It gets a lot of use, so.
Yeah. Sure. Well, the one part you're talking about there, for the storage facility here, we're gonna be taken down. We have three container, sea-land containers down there, and they're all joined together with a roof there, and this goes about 40 foot wide, maybe about five, 50 foot long, and that's all gonna come down, because them floors are completely rotted out. And now all that steel in that would have just been thrown out. It'll give us more room to store stuff and have room in the yard there for whenever we have something go on there. And as regards to the drainage issue, we have a swale that goes through, comes through our yard and out into the woods that goes into the brook. And we have to pipe some of it as, it gets so wet back there, we can't even drive back there. So we're gonna do some drain, put some piping in and make some drainage so we can go in there at all times.
And the good news is we have a lot of surplus material, so we won't have any outlay of, for cost of material. The men, and the men can do the work themselves.
Yeah, we're gonna, we have piping laying around, and I use millings for all this drainage. We don't have to purchase anything. When we mill roads, I bring in loads of stuff, and we use that as their fill. So this way, that's no cost to anybody. And it's a material that sometimes Bob has leftover when he does a reconstruction job. We put it in the yard, and then we use the material as we need it, so we don't have to put another addition on to anything. We just use the material that's in the yard.
That works.
I think it'll make it much more. It just ties in nicely with the new pole.
Sounds good, so that'll be, you'll be coming back May 12th.
I'll put an agenda rec in for the next meeting.
Excellent. Any other questions for David? Thank you, David. Okay, our last item is number 15, appropriation of $450,000 in General Capital Improvement Fund for replacement of HVAC system at the library. And this is ordinance 23, 2014, which is listed for introduction.
Good evening. We've been talking about this project, same thing David said, for quite a while. And we did the first phase of the project about a month ago in abating the lobby ceiling, so that first step has been done.
Questions or comments for Nancy? Pat?
One quick question. Ray just handed me the old ordinances. There's one from 2012 that says library HVAC, $46,000, and it doesn't look like any of it's been spent. Are we using that for this also as well, or is that for something else?
Yes, we've been using some of that. There's some charges to that at this point.
Okay.
In preparation for this project.
Yeah, because just in general, I sent around a spreadsheet this afternoon. To me, it would be helpful if we kept track of all the projects that we have, especially this year with so many of them. You know, when we've approved them, how much, when the bids came in, how much they were for, what the potential savings looks like, what the final closeout, if we recapture the money. Because given the three and a half million, I don't expect the same type of savings we saw on the road project, but if we even save 10%, that's quite a bit of money over the course of the year, on top of the money we're already probably gonna save on the road project. So whether we decide we want to reinvest it this year, and, you know, fully charge out three and a half million, or just recapture for future years, I think it would be helpful. It'd also be helpful to get this thing that Ray gave me on a regular basis from previous years, so we can keep an eye on these, because some of these are kind of old. And my experience in the private sector is that you're better off closing out things as soon as you possibly can.
Ben?
Yeah, I...
Rob?
I think it's worth mentioning, we haven't had a chance to discuss this, but the Strategic Planning Committee charged with looking at capital is also looking into how to keep better track of capital projects. So I know you sent an email around, I hadn't had a chance to look at it before this meeting, but we should talk offline and see if we can adopt some of this into their efforts.
Excellent. Rob?
Thank you. I will be voting yes on this, but I would ask that for the next meetings, if we could have the administrators work with the library staff to get a better idea on what the abatement issues look like, and if we can get a picture, a better picture of what we think the whole, you know, the whole project would entail. I'd like to...
Timing-wise, we'll look at either the 12th or the...
Thank you.
Would you be, a Wednesday meeting for the second one in May for that? And Ray and Jim will work with you and Nancy as to give you guidelines as to what we need. But just the idea that, you know, there's a lot going on in the building, and so we can all see, get a refresher on everything that's going on, and what you anticipate, the abatement, future abatement projects.
Future abatement?
Yep.
Okay. I don't think we're expecting any more with this particular project, this far as I know.
Right, but it's just, yeah.
Okay, just other, future.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, and this is ordinance 23, which is listed for introduction. Thank you very much. And now we move on to ordinances for hearings.
The ordinance scheduled for hearing was introduced by title and passed on first reading at the regular meeting of the council, held on Friday, April 11, 2014. It was posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call up the ordinance for second reading, ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance seven, 2014, ordinance of the borough of Madison, adopting an amended redevelopment plan in accordance with NJSA 48:12A-7.
Now open the hearing.
No, just ask a question.
Point of order, yeah.
To be table deferred?
Yep.
Maybe I can explain it.
Table are deferred. Maybe I can explain. The developer who we've been negotiating with for the Green Village Road property on behalf of the Board of Education had requested certain amendments to the redevelopment plan. We have not concluded our negotiations with that entity, so we feel it would not be appropriate to adopt a plan that's consistent with their design until we have final documents with them. We don't want to commit to their design without the documents to go along with it. So we're requesting that it be deferred tonight, and I believe Matt's office was taking a look as to whether we should have the hearing tonight, and then close the hearing.
Yeah, that was my question, whether...
Just don't take a vote on it, or whether we should defer the hearing, because we anticipate additional, there's additional comments we believe will be coming as part of a planning process with our planner.
And if there's gonna be a substantial change to it, we're gonna have to reintroduce it, have a first and second reading. So right now, there's, there's no public comment on it. What we should do is actually have a motion to table.
So the hearing will be, there will be no hearing, and we'll have a motion to table ordinance seven, 2014.
I move.
Second, any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
All right, now we're on to number 15, which is invitation for discussion number two. When you may comment on anything, not just limited to items on the agenda, please step to the lectern, state your name, your address, and write the same on the clipboard, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to be heard, please step forward. Got the whole Zipper family back. Welcome. All right.
Richard Zipper, 197 Greenwood Avenue. Sam mentioned earlier about the hard-to-hear the meeting. The thing I notice is that people get up and leave the meeting, and then they go out in the hall, and they talk loudly, which I think disturbs the meeting. I was wondering if it would be rude if the council put a sign on one of these poles by the door that said maybe, "Quiet, please, meeting in progress," or something like that, without getting too overly...
Yep, good idea.
It might solve the problem.
Yep, because we're not allowed to close the doors, because it has to be an open meeting.
Right, you know, people might get the message. The other thing is, the Bike Week and the Green Day, which was successful just a couple days ago, made me start thinking about the gardens, the community gardens, and the new ball fields that were built. There's a big fence down there at the bottom of Burnett Road, and if anyone from, wants to, say, walk to the garden, attend their garden, or maybe ride their bike to the garden, they come up to a fence. And the garden's only about 50 feet away from them, but to get from this side of the fence to get to the garden, they have to go a mile all the way around in their car. It doesn't encourage people to walk and ride their bike, if that's the case. There's really bad access from the bottom of Burnett Road. If we could just put a hole in the fence, people could walk through, and they could, kids could maybe get to their sports games without having to have someone drive them all the way around. I actually clocked it in my car. It's 1.1 miles from the bottom of Burnett Road all the way around to the parking lot, so. Doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we can do it, but we'll look into the connections there and see if it's certainly a good idea. So Ray has captured that thought?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Sam, Social Yellow Park Avenue. Madison Eagle had Flora Park with this four-story building. Bob, you probably can help me. Going down Burnett Road, are we gonna run right into that hotel? Is that where the entrance is?
Burnett Road, it'll be...
Danforth Road, I'm sorry.
That's the, it's basically the location.
Right at that light, it's gonna go right into that.
Yep. That's what the ordinance right now talks about. We are talking with Flora Park about the impact on our town.
My question is, you know, I talked to a few people from Flora Park, you know, I know some council people went to the meeting, and our attorney went to the meeting. Then we go through this when we first try to, they try to put the property together, way back. In other words, who are we to tell Flora Park, what's our purpose of going through these meetings and spending money on the lawyer? What do we, what's the, what's the point?
Well, in a broad thought, you know, obviously, New Jersey planning is always a challenge with the home rule capital of the world and so many small, square-mile-wise communities that you're on top of each other. And when one community does something, everyone feels it. And so it's an idea of making sure that no matter what neighbor it is, and whether it's Madison and Flora Park, or it's Ridgefield Park, and whatever is next to it.
My question is, what do we, what is, what do we want them to?
Basically, we just want to make sure that they take consideration of the full impact of any development, that, you know, we know that Park Avenue, as you're a resident Park Avenue, can only handle so much traffic. That is a big part of what we're dealing with, is the traffic it may generate, and quality of life issues. And this happens across the state in neighboring towns.
I mean, do we think we have a chance? I mean, like I said, it's like maybe we're just blowing it in the wind, you know? In other words, I wouldn't want them to come and tell us what to do, you know? But anyway, there's, on the upside is that, you know, looking at it business-wise, I mean, it brings a lot of traffic to all the restaurants, the barber shop, you know? In other words, you know, we're asking town to keep going. There's a lot of people do a lot, you're right. I mean, it's beyond help now. I just gotta know what time to get out of my parking lot. I gotta make sure, you know? But like I said, I think maybe just a waste of money going over there and telling them according to what their people in Flora Park are saying, you know? But, yep.
Good luck. Yeah, and just so everyone knows, our approach is on the, to keep it positive and make sure they understand our concerns, and that they can respond accordingly. Joe?
Joe Bavirsha, Beach Avenue. I wasn't gonna say anything, but I just wanted to respond to what Sam said. I live at the corner of Beach and Cedar, and in the Oak Knoll section. And everybody there, whether on Beach, Rose, Pine, Cedar, Park Avenue, we're all concerned and worried about the development of this building, those corporate suites, because it's going to be 265 units. The, I spoke with our attorney, Sal, it could be up to 65 feet high and five floors, which I think is the ordinance that I was, that Sal explained to me. So this is going to be a huge building, and will go from Danforth and Park up to almost a realogy building. So, you know, and this is going to affect certainly the people on Park Avenue, directly across the street, and influence the people on Pine Avenue as well. And they'll be looking, you know, almost directly into a building. Right now, this building has only 150 foot, it's my understanding, 150-foot setback. So, you know, when I was at the meeting with Flora Park two weeks ago, as well as other people of the council and other members of our neighborhood, we just expressed that we would like them to be sympathetic to the nature and the character of the Oak Knoll section, which is small homes, Tudors, Colonials, and that they should, you know, at least look at that and the impact of a huge building would have directly on the neighborhood. That's all we're asking for, and I think it's incumbent on the government of this borough to, you know, look at the concerns of our, you know, of our neighborhoods, and how the impact of development will make on it. All right, thank you.
Just to share two things, because I can't give too many details. One is, we've had some positive conversations with Flora Park about just the site and options, and there's nothing to share at this point. But the other is that this council is committed to making sure they represent the best interests of that neighborhood and overall Madison, and will pursue that. Any other people wishing to comment? At this point, I will close this part of the meeting, and we will move on to introduction of ordinances.
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set Monday, May 12, 2014. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinance eight, 2014, for first reading, ask the borough clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance eight, 2014, ordinance of the borough of Madison appropriating $57,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund to purchase one pickup truck.
Mayor, I move ordinance eight, 2014.
I second it. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance nine, 2014, ordinance of the borough of Madison appropriating $11,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund to purchase four sets of firefighter turnout gear.
Mayor, I move ordinance nine, 2014.
I second it. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Cat, I'm sorry. Did we have, okay. Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 10, 2014, ordinance of the borough of Madison amending section 285-29 of the Borough Code to prohibit parking on the south side of Burnett Road during school and sporting events.
Mayor, I move ordinance 10, 2014.
I second it. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 11, 2014, ordinance of the borough of Madison replacing ordinance five, 2008, setting the salary ranges for non-union full-time employees.
Mayor, I move ordinance 11, 2014.
I second that. Counsel discussion?
I have one quick question. If we approve this, does this mean that we can't pay our non-union staff outside this range?
Yes. You have to, you have to pay within the published salary ordinance. So you could always amend the ordinance if you want to do something differently, but right now, this would be the ordinance that would control.
Are there any, we don't need to name the positions, but are we, at this point?
Nobody's near the maximum.
Okay.
With the raise from the 2014 budget. I don't know if that's the question, but I will give you an answer to a question that was...
That's fine, that's fine. It's nice to know that nobody's near the maximum, I guess. But, no, it just, you know, sometimes you may wanna, we can just modify it on the fly if we need to.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 12, 2014, ordinance of the borough of Madison appropriating $65,000 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund to purchase two pad mount transformers.
Mayor, I move ordinance 12, 2014.
I'd like to second that motion.
Further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 13, 2014, ordinance of the borough of Madison appropriating $30,000 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund to purchase a three-quarter ton pickup truck.
Mayor, I move ordinance 13, 2014.
I second that motion.
Further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance 14, 2014, ordinance of the borough of Madison appropriating $25,000 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund to purchase new battery banks... Capital Improvement Fund to purchase new battery banks at the King's Road and James Park substations.
Mayor, I move ordinance fourteen dash twenty fourteen.
I second that motion.
Further discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance fifteen, two thousand fourteen. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating thirty thousand dollars from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund to purchase a new fiber optic pilot relay system between the King's Road and James Park substations.
Mayor, I move ordinance fifteen dash twenty fourteen.
I second that motion.
Further discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance sixteen, two thousand fourteen. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating ten thousand dollars from the Water Capital Improvement Fund for well upgrades.
Mayor, I move ordinance sixteen dash twenty fourteen.
I second that motion.
Further discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
I vote yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance seventeen, two thousand fourteen. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating eighty thousand dollars from the Water Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a new generator at well E.
Mayor, I move ordinance seventeen dash twenty fourteen.
I second that motion.
Further discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance eighteen, two thousand fourteen. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating one hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the Water Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a backhoe for the Department of Public Works.
Mayor, I move ordinance eighteen dash twenty fourteen.
I second the motion.
Further discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance nineteen, two thousand fourteen. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating one hundred and sixty thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a lift replacement for the Department of Public Works.
Mayor, I move ordinance nineteen dash twenty fourteen.
I second the motion.
Further discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty, two thousand fourteen.